Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's my privilege to welcome all of you to this regularly scheduled city council meeting, City of Vader, which I will officially call to order at 6:31 PM. And as is a newly emerging tradition, we will begin these proceedings with a non-denominational Christian prayer. And I am not aware of any specific arrangements that have been made for...
Mark Fenison is going to do the keynote tonight?
Yes, thank you. So with that, I would invite all to join with us in that regard.
I'm going to give a prayer from, a statement from our history, this from George Washington, June 14th, 1783, to the governors of the Spanish of the army. Let's pray. Almighty God, we make our honest prayer that thou will keep the United States in thy own protection, and that will incline the hearts of the citizens to cultivate a spirit of domination and obedience to the government, and entertain a brotherly affection and love for one another, and for their fellow citizens of the United States at large, and particularly for their brethren who have served in the field. And finally, that thou will most graciously be pleased to dispose us all to do justice, to love mercy, and to demean ourselves without charity, humility, and the civic temper of mind, which were the characteristics of the divine author of our blessed religion, and without a humble imitation of whose example in these things we can never hope to be a happy nation. Grant our supplication, we receive thee through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Fenison. Now with that, I will proceed with our roll call.
Okay. Andy Wilson?
Present.
Mark Fenison?
Present.
Joe Schei?
Present.
Justin Olson?
He did indicate that he would ask to be excused for personal reasons.
Kevin Flynn?
Present.
And Mayor Smith?
Also present. So we have sufficient numbers to constitute a quorum. So with that, we'll proceed with our pledge of allegiance. Would invite you to all round here. Now, Mr. Flynn, would you lead us, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Grateful for all of you present, representative of Lewis County Sheriff's Department, who is now at the presence. Grateful for your service to our community.
Thank you.
I'll proceed quickly with the mayor's report. Just item one was to bring to the general awareness of those in the audience and on the council that we'll have a yard waste recycling and document shedding event on June 28th of this year. And right now, to the best of my knowledge of last report, it will be held at the entrance to our waste treatment plant, just past the gravel pile. So spread the word and take advantage of it. It's, if you have specific questions about what it means, feel free to contact City Hall either after the meeting or you can call during your work day. Item number two, I wanted to give a brief update relating to the Brandon Milton, the Atlas company that he's sponsoring, relating to the marijuana grow operation. I just wanted to inform the council that we have received a request for public records that require us to provide to their attorney any and all documents since 2007 that relate between the City of Vader and Lewis County that have any dealings or connections to the absolute German company. So brought to our awareness that they have an attorney involved in the situation at this moment in time, and that that public records request will require considerable time from our city employees. But nonetheless, we're eager to respond to it. It's what the right privilege of the public if they have questions and a need to validate public records. So I don't share that with any sort of negativity at all. So that is probably the extent of any new business related to that subject.
The letter from the liquor board?
The...
We received a letter from the liquor board.
Relating to the Atlas. They've, we did receive a request or a notice that an application had been officially filed, and that they requested a response from the city as to whether or not the application would be approved. And we informed our city attorney that we would prefer that she prepare a response, Carol Morris, and a response was prepared delineating the city council's stance and the current six months ban on any such activities. And that letter was forwarded to the state as of last week.
I haven't gotten a copy of it yet, so I don't know what day she sent it.
Well, I know that it's been prepared and it will be sent imminently, if it hasn't already, by our city attorney. So that, I think, probably represents the extent of that subject. It was brought to our attention, item number three, that there's going to be a webinar, if I recall correctly, and it would be on the 20th?
On the 20th.
At 10:30 to noon. And it's one of those required trainings. And we noted on your training schedule that most of you are in need of it, including myself.
It's a new law, so everyone is in need.
Yes. So I would make contact with our city clerk and plug yourself into that if your schedule allows it. Again, that's the 20th at 10:30.
Mayor, can I? I will make it available as broadcasting it from here on the screen and through our sound system so we can all participate and watch. For all elected officials, also appointed officials like the park board and the planning commission and city employees are all required to have this training. This is the training that I went to a few weeks ago, and I told everybody that it was such an awesome training, and everybody needs, they're putting it on a webinar so that everybody can get that, so.
It would put us in good stead, I think, with RMSA, our insurance carrier. We could show that we're receptive to their training efforts.
No, this is an RMSA required.
I know, but they monitor their council members, elected officials.
Right, this is by law that we have to have this training, so.
It's a double. We give a double win. Okay, so next item is the upcoming 4th of July event, which the city is getting behind. And we have present with us Reggie and Linda Smith, who are two of the movers and shakers behind that activity. And the feedback I'm getting from the organizers is that it's going to be even better than last year's. And I have a couple dozen family members and friends that witnessed last year's, and I thought it was the best I'd ever seen in City of Vader. So tops last year, it's going to be a real whiz-bang of a show.
I just want to say that we were able to collect $1,800 towards that particular event.
And thanks to Reggie going door to door, didn't add that part. Well done, and that's extraordinary. So I know that there'd be a full array of events. I wanted to add that in consultation with council member Flynn, who's single-handedly carried out the annual gravity races, we've tried to shift it to the 4th of July date, and it doesn't appear that it's going to work out as had been hoped. So I'm not, it hasn't been definitively decided, but it appears that it might not be able to take place this year at all. So I don't know if you wanted to add something on that?
It's just that the cost of putting it on versus the response that we're getting, a couple people who did race told me that they couldn't do it on the 4th of July because everybody has plans on the 4th of July, family picnics, they're going to the ocean. And to go through all that and make all the requirements, and shut the street down, and ask for the security, and pay for the insurance, it's not worth it. And I, as much as I don't want to say that, but it's just not worth it for two or three cars. It's asking a lot of people, do a lot of work for nothing. And I'd rather postpone it, or, right now, because of the time of the year and things that are going on, we're thinking of cancel it, and maybe try again next year and see if we can get a better response. That just makes a lot of sense.
Well, but we do appreciate all the good effort that you've put in that in the past couple of years, so I don't think we're not grateful for it. I would add, though, as a matter of public record, that I've spoken with the director of this year's event, Judy Costello, and asked her permission if the mayor could conduct, instead of the annual mayor's corn feed in October, we could reshape that event, call it the mayor's watermelon bust. And so the mayor's going to provide lots of watermelon, and we're going to have some seat spitting contests and other activities to be described later.
Great, good.
And it'll happen right after the lawnmower parade. So, and the band will be there. It's going to be a fun event, so we invite everyone to come.
If you want to call me, I've set aside $100 of the donation money for prizes for kids for the games that we're having.
Oh, really?
So they need a prize for yours.
Well, yeah.
Seat spitting.
Definitely. Yes, well, we will talk.
I've got real fashion games planned in each group. But we decided, you know, it's for the kids. It's for the big kids, you know, the fireworks, but it's for the little kids the rest of the day.
Exactly. Okay, very good, and we'll talk.
So, here Mayor Jane Mullin on.
Okay, you got the deal. Thank you. So it, even if we don't have our downhill races, it still is going to be worth getting the community involved and bringing your family in practice. Last item on the mayor's report involves an extremely important activity. It might not sound all that relevant, but relating to the shoreline management program, we're required to hold a public hearing. If we've set the date for that, June 26th, which would be the date of our next council meeting, we'd like to have it at 5:30, the hour preceding. And the individual who will be handling that will be John Hinton with the Gray and Osborn Engineering. He's expanded the funding, the grant funding that we have allocated for that. And I, he's made a presentation to the committee that was formed to work with him on that. And I have not heard the report, but I've heard that it is going to be a work hearing, so you want to be there for that event. Now, I saw a hand go up. Would the council care to hear a comment?
Sure.
Clarification, please, on the shoreline management program. What is that, please?
State of Washington requires any community that has shoreline, whether it's a riverside, river edge, or shore.
The Olaqua, then.
Yes, the Olaqua. And property conjoining it, and any potential impact it might have on it. So the results of that analysis are in, and that's what the public hearing will be about. Okay, with that, that concludes the mayor's report. And if there are no questions from the council, I'm eager to move into the next item on our agenda, which is, in my mind, is reflection on the, what is good about this country, from adversity, springs, good things. People respond accordingly when the need is evident. So I've been asked to allocate some time in our agenda to, which I will turn over to Pastor Tracy Durham, the Assembly of God Church here in the community, it was recently vandalized, and he has a presentation he'd like to make. So Pastor, you may take some mic.
Is it okay if I just stand right here?
Of course.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We, you probably all heard about the jail being vandalized, the door kicked in, and then they came over to the church, saw that we had security cameras, and broke those off. They beat them with a stick and then tore them off. They busted the phone interface off the side of our building, cut our phone lines, cut the phone lines to the houses down the street, as well as they tore open an electrical panel that feeds our building, were pulling on the wires. So, and all of that, when we, I came to church Sunday morning, this was Memorial Weekend, we had no phone, we had no internet, and we discovered all these things. We went to our surveillance cameras, and there we saw the young people, four young people, three young men and a young lady, that had done this damage. We called the sheriff's department, and they responded immediately. Church was out at 12, they were there at 12:05. I looked, viewed our video surveillance, and by 1:30 had all the names, addresses of the young people that had performed this vandalism and had begun making arrests. So the word got out to the sheriff's report, the radio station ran a little blurb on it, and then it got out to the Daily News, and from there, KATU, Channel 2 in Portland, picked up the story, and they came up and interviewed us and did a story. And that leads us to where we are tonight, which, by the way, the Town Crier won a wonderful follow-up report this week, as well as today. Tonight, The Chronicle has it on the front page, Vader Church Offers Forgiveness to Vandals. And there's a whole write-up on that in tonight's paper. Out of that story from Channel 2 News, we were contacted by two different entities. The first was the Knights of Columbus from the Catholic Church, St. Joseph's Parish in Chehalis, and they said, "We feel terrible about what's happened, and we would like to provide a new flag for you." And so they have done so, and I'll be presenting that as well. But a young lady, she was served in the military by the name of Emily Wheelberger, saw the story, and she was greatly disturbed that this kind of activity would take place in our community, and offered to provide a flag, a replacement flag that has been flown over the United States Capitol on April the 6th, 2014 of this year. And this flag was, by request of Suzanne Bonamici, Democrat, she requested that the flag be flown for her organization called the Rainbow Girls, but it ended up they got two flags. And so she said, "We want to make sure that you have a flag." And she said, "Please," she didn't want to make a big deal about her offering, but she said, "Please tell those members of your community, especially those that are veterans and were so disturbed by the way that our flag was treated, that not all young people feel that way, and that there are younger people that are patriotic and love our country." And she wanted to make sure that I expressed that when making the presentation tonight. Despite some of the news reports, the original flag that was burned, cut, stripped, knotted, and put back up on the flagpole was on loan from Reggie and Linda Smith. They had that in their possession in case there are charges that are going to be filed related to that. But that was Reggie's flag on loan to the city. And so tonight, I would like to present myself, a flag from the Knights of Columbus, and because it was Reggie's flag that had been destroyed, I would ask if he could present this replacement flag to the city, and I would ask him if he could present that to the mayor, and I will present this certificate that states the history of this flag and how we came to acquire it. So we would like to present those to Mayor Smith.
Perhaps I will represent the council.
And the council, yes, that would be, that would be wonderful. Now, to all the veterans, to the City of Vader, I give you this flag.
Well, thank you, and to the Vader City Council and the veterans who serve on that in the council, I received this and accept it with our gratitude.
It was a, really a despairing day for me, because I'm a disabled vet. And so to see the flag destroyed like that, really hit home for me, hit home for me, still.
Well, thank you for your service and your generosity to our community. Pastor Durham, thank you so much.
Yes, and behalf of the Knights of Columbus from St. Joseph's Parish, they also wanted to contribute to our community and the flag, so we appreciate that and thank you. And also, I have the lady's name, if it would be appropriate to send her a thank you on behalf of the city, I'm sure that would be most appreciated.
You have our assurances that that will be done.
Right.
Thank you for your inspiration as you go through the forgiveness process with these youth, and maybe they will learn an important life lesson.
Well, one thing, two of the youth came to the church with their father a week and a half ago, and they said, "We are really sorry. We apologize for what we did. It was stupid. We knew we shouldn't have done it, but we were kind of caught up in the heat of the moment, and we will come and work to pay off the damages, and we're going to make sure, if the judge allows, community service that we were supposed to be done here, Vader, and at the church in this community property." So that's the direction that that's in. I have not heard from the other family involved, but the judge should have come and tried to make amends. So I hope there's some good that can come out of all this. So thank you, council, and Mr. Durham for the upgrade.
Thank you once again. Thank you again for that presentation. Let's move to us.
If I may, I'd like to make some comments. Reggie's wife, the flag that's flying there now, was mine, and she had took and repaired it. And Reggie's flag was mine when they burnt, and I was upset. But I like to say that, don't get me wrong when I say I'm patting myself on the back, but that flagpole was dedicated to the city by me in 2003, and I have flown a five-by-eight flag almost constantly from my own pocket to today. And I've heard a lot of stories that it came from the school. It didn't come from the school. And that was done in 2003, before any of you probably moved to City of Vader. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
Very good. Had a flag, wasn't flying very high without a pole, so thank you for that. Let's proceed with the agenda approval. And hopefully you've had a chance to review it. I don't have any changes from my perspective on it, so this will be your opportunity to approve it, if so desired.
I'll make a, excuse me, a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Okay, Mr. Schei has submitted a motion to approve the agenda as is written. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Fenison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I will proceed with the approval of the official minutes from our last council meeting. Wait, council, I...
I'd like to prove the minutes for, make a motion to approve the minutes for May 22nd, 2014.
Okay, Mr. Flynn has submitted that motion as stated. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Seconded by Mr. Wiltson. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Now we're at the voucher approval for the 1st of June, 2014.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the vouchers for the 1st of June, 2014, in the amount of $25,032.26.
Okay, Mr. Schei has submitted a motion approving the voucher expenditure in said amount. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Flynn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Public comment?
I have three people. First is Don Davidson.
Okay. Mr. Davidson, take the podium. Remind our commentators, you have three minutes.
Good. Hi, I'm Don Davidson. I'm a local worker in the local area. I have a comment on the purchasing of a park, parcel of carpet that's next from, next to the other one that's sitting there next to this, sold by the Assembly of God Church, I believe, and I think I've read that it was going to be approved or something along that line tonight. My thought is, I don't think it's very feasible for the stance where the city is at this point in time, for I've been watching for the last nine months since I've been here and moved here from Portland. When you have so much difficulty with just the different things that you've had in the past, as far as bills and such like that, and the new EPA assessments and valuations that they're doing, the payments that you have, and the raises that you've given all your city employees, which is a good thing, trying to bank a few months ahead of the city payments for Mr. Flynn's thought, and this was his idea, what about the road conditions of all the alleys who need work? Priorities are kind of out of order, I was thinking on that sense, because the, what benefits will the church get from that sale to the city? Maintenance for the people, rather than trying to build something new you don't have the money for. Roads, alleys, parks, and city maintenance would take a priority, I would think, along that line, especially the ones that really need it, as large, what all the money you Waste to the squint of our, it's just, it's just needs, so you just don't go back in the hole, is what I'm thinking. I've just, I've seen that, like I said, just the last nine months, I just wanted to state that for public record.
Okay, thank you very much. I know you would like probably to respond to that, but I don't think any responses, because I could inform him that the funding for that is being pursued through a grant, so it wouldn't be funded if we get the grant.
Yeah.
So, but I could talk to you about that.
I would love to. That'd be great, thank you, sir.
And next?
Next is Lou Eback.
I think I'll have to count up, because I'm counting pretty much what else I can say.
Okay, all right.
And then last is Phil.
Sure, so. Currently, I'm living just down the river, about a mile, maybe a little bit more, in...
Which direction?
Downriver, so it'd be south. This is a picture of the river. Now, this is right outside, right next to a rapids, and this is just below where I'm currently at. Now, we called earlier and said, and referred that it might have been, the growth might be caused by stagnant, but what I found is the faster the water ran, to a certain point, the worse it got. And the areas in which the water tended to be stagnant, it tended to turn to brown, like it was dying out. But the areas where there was a good flow of water, about, I'd say about a mile an hour... hour, maybe a little bit more, there was this. And then all the way across the river, in spots on all the rocks, all the way across the river, no matter how fast or deep the water was. This is from right down one spot, this is a half, about a quarter mile up. And this is just below a slide area. On the road here, there's a slide area down the side, that's just below that. And there, the water is quite fast. And I've noticed where it was the thinnest, with a good steady flow of water, you have just like hair over everything. Now, this improved greatly last year. Before then, they had a little bit of it. Last year, there was almost none. This is the worst I've ever seen it. And this is right next to very fast-moving water. This water in here is traveling, in this part of it, is traveling about three miles an hour. Then you have the Eddy line where it's going a little slower. And I grew up in an area where we had nitrogen algae blooms, and that's what this is. And what is caused by is high nitrogen in the water. I have not been able to go upstream of your sewage discharge, but I would suspect that you've got a problem. What concerns me most is, a mile further, is where the Fish and Game Department have their fish ware. And they consider this area the only claw endangered salmon breeding area, critical area. If this stuff starts showing up on their ware, you're going to be in trouble.
Thank you for that. You're very informative.
I also have more pictures if you'd like to see them later.
Counsel, does mine, what was your name again?
Philip Chantot.
Okay. Perhaps that we could talk and I could get your locative information for the council. There's nobody else. With that, let's proceed with our unfinished business portion of the agenda. Item number one, I'm very pleased to finally be able to report to the council that based on the authority that you placed upon me with the ordinance that was passed by the council, I've successfully identified five outstanding individuals within our community who've expressed willingness to serve as members of the planning commission. And per the guidelines, the mayor submits names to you for your confirming vote. And that's what I would like to proceed with at this moment in time. Does council have a list of the...
They have an agenda bill that gives them all that information.
So I would submit to you for your confirming vote, Mrs. Diane Mylum, who's lived within our community for the past three years, and Mr. Scott Stevens, who also has lived here for approximately five years and had hopes of starting a nursery, a greenhouse, within our city limits, Peter Smith, who has a fledgling fudge factory here within our community, and Mr. Jim Black, who's a truck driver and lived here for three years. And last but not least, a recent retiree from the Low County Sheriff's Department and Director of the Emergency Management Program in that department, Mr. Ross McDowell. So I recommend these individuals highly. They're individuals of integrity and have convinced me that they're quite anxious to contribute to the betterment of our community by serving on that committee. And it's important to note that they all needed to be residents of Vader for at least one year, which I know I had at least one other individual, but that's one of the requirements. So with that, I would hope that council might proceed with an official confirmation of those five individuals.
Do you want to do that by motion?
Yes, there's a motion here.
Yeah, it should take.
Because they have two different terms. So you have to do it in two separate motions, because they're different. Oh, excuse me.
I'd like to make the move for a consolidated motion. I move to confirm the mayor's appointment of names to the Vader Planning Committee for one-year term. And that would be one-year term, Diane Mylum, Scott Stevens, and Peter Smith. And I move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Jim Black and Ross McDowell to the Vader Planning Committee for two years.
Mr. Flynn has submitted a motion approving those five individuals with the term stipulations as noted. Do we have a second on that motion? Good, seconded by Mr. Pennison. Is there any, the council deliberation at this moment in time? Comments? There will be training provided to this group and by Rob White, who, as you're aware, is our city planner, part-time, but he's anxious to get together with these individuals and the members of the council too, for that matter, if you'd like to be briefed on the situation. So hearing no comments from the council, then we're ready to vote on it. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, obviously, these individuals need to be sworn in and they were invited to come. But I would prefer to swear that may have some couldn't be here. We have Ross McDowell present with us, but do we have the paperwork?
Actually, I do. I left it on the top here. If you want to.
Yeah, if you're not opposed to that, Ross, you'll be our official, first official.
You were the only one we had trepidations about, Ross. We overcame that.
That's it.
I had to say that.
I do.
So Ross, you can sit for a minute, please. If you would raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Ross McDowell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the State of Washington.
And the laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially perform.
And impartially perform.
And discharge the duties.
And discharge the duties.
Of the Vader City Planning Commission.
Of the Vader City Planning Commission.
Of the City of Vader, Washington.
Of the City of Vader, Washington.
According to law.
According to law.
And the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Your official. We're up and running. And we will send in motion the processes to swear in the remaining four members as soon as possible. And we will then set a meeting date for the members of the commission and we'll inform the council as soon as we can get that done. Okay. Let's proceed now with item number two, capital facility plan topics. This sounds complicated, and it could be if we delved into it in particulars. But what I need to inform the council, as you are well aware, in our last two meetings, we've had executive sessions during which we've discussed the particulars relating to the potential acquisition of a park property and property on which the post office is Fortuitously, we converse with our city attorney on said topics. And she brings a level of expertise that parcs sees any of our expertise. And she, as she became aware of where we were at in this process, informed us that there are some legal steps that need to happen, that I wasn't aware of and that the council members were not aware of. And so tonight, I'm here to inform you that before we're able to proceed with either of those potential acquisitions, we need to amend the capital facilities plan. It's just acquired by RCW. So it's not terribly complicated, but we can't engage in the acquisition of land with public funds unless it's inserted as part of our capital facilities plan. That make sense? So we're at a standstill until we can proceed with that. And I know Pastor Durham, one of the properties owned by the church was, and I know we'd spoken several years ago about the possibility of acquiring that. And it's always been one of the goals of the community of Vader to acquire that, in case there are those who think that this is just an off-the-cuff effort, because everybody has recognized current postage stamp size Worden Park is very difficult to actually call the city park. So we've always wanted to expand onto that adjoining property. But all that having been said, Mr. Campos is aware of this, who owns the property by the post office, is aware of this Little Monkey Ranch. And so at the moment, he's okay with standing out of the time necessary to carry out this facility plan amendment. So that's what I'm here to report on that issue.
Well, maybe they could donate it. That would be safe.
We could always want that, though.
We'll donate the land if you will donate the money to us that we were going to sell it to the city for.
Sounds good to me.
Let's vote on that.
I give that an aye.
I'd like to hear a motion, so. But no harm in asking, right? So, but as you're aware, I mean, one of the projects, one relating to the park, you will note in one of our next agenda items, that we're applying for funding through the Burlington Northern Railroad, which would represent the purchase price of that park property. So it wouldn't directly come out of city funds. So, but that's, in fact, it is part of this agenda. It's land purchase next to Worden Park and grant request application approval. Can I clarify that? I'm pleased to report, along segueing nicely into that, that you should have a copy finally of the long-awaited grant application. You probably didn't get it until yesterday or the day before, maybe, but it's fairly We're ready to submit this. It contains the amount, price of the property. It contains a $5,000 funding source from the city. And so the total price would be $17,000. $5,000 would come from Burlington Northern to add to our $5,000 for playground equipment. And $7,000 would come from Burlington Northern grant funds to acquire the property. Does that make sense? $17,000 is the total amount of this grant package. So I would like, council, if you're okay with this, to approve it so we can send it tomorrow morning.
We need a motion on that?
Yes, we do.
I'll put a motion on the table to approve the grant application to be submitted to the railroad tomorrow morning.
Okay, Mr. Flynn has submitted a motion to the council to approve the grant application as written and for submission as early as tomorrow morning. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Shai. Does council have any comments, input, feedback? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Fantastic. Okay, well, now we'll close that poll. Now, let's proceed with wastewater topics. Item, you're going to note item C, right?
Uh huh. I just, we just needed to...
You want me to mention it?
No, we just needed to tell council that in order to, we talked about this when the budget was passed, but we allotted REIT money. We wanted some of that real estate excise tax money for the park to be able to use that for the electricity. But in order, what I've found is that in order to do that, that money is specifically designated for certain capital projects. And so in order to use that specific money, it has to, the project has to be also in the capital facilities plan. So that will also need to be part of the capital facilities plan amendment.
Thank you for elucidating that. There's more background there that I was thinking of that I prefer not to bring up at a public meeting at this particular moment in time. But thank you for lumping that in as part of the capital facilities plan amendment. Okay, now let's jump into wastewater topics. Item A, status of sewer operator hiring. I'm pleased to report that I've, I'm always looking for miracles, and I think a miracle happened last week when we reestablished contact with Carl Jones, who suggested we re-contact on Alaska. Some of you may have been on the council when we pursued a potential relationship with the City of Alaska, who had an employee who was willing to serve as a part-time contractor for the city. And that fell through for a number of reasons. But Carl suggested we re-contact them, which we did. And we have a new employee who, when he heard about the position that we've been trying to fill to replace Dennis Baker from Winlaw, just to get you up to speed, he quite enthusiastically expressed interest in the opportunity. And so he indicated that he, because we're advertising for it, which you're probably aware, to fill that position for, I think, the third time. And so he indicated he would submit an application. Did he send it today?
I haven't received it yet.
So we hope to get it imminently. And we also have heard word that the Public Works Employee for the City of, Director for the City of PL, who's rekindled his interest in the position as well. Not as an employee, but as a contract.
Okay.
Okay. Very embarrassing, but...
It's our future.
Yeah. So just the opposite. But, so we'll end up with two applications, more than likely. And so my job will be obviously to interview both and then provide my recommendation to you. And I'm hoping that by our next meeting, we will have somebody for you to consider again. And that's that. So now we have a comment from a member of the community with counsel. Care to...
Yes.
To that, okay, that you're saying.
My question is, it concerns the applicants. When you interview them, could you possibly keep the second person available for a backup in case future situations arise?
Yes, we regularly do that. So thank you for that observation. I'd go to item B, CDPG scope change request. I'd go to item B, CDBG scope change request. This agenda item topic relates to a document that we have been trying to get from Mike Marshall of Gibson Olson, which is the official letter to Department of Ecology informing them of the need to modify the use of the funds from public pipe repair to the private property repair. And the nutshell, bottom line is that Mike Marshall has finally got the letter done, and it's been sent. So that is no longer a challenge for the city of Vader. And I would point to the good efforts of Kathy Reed and our city staff and myself for encouraging Mike Marshall to get off the dime and get it done. So if you were worried about it, now you don't need to be. So that, Kathy is very pleased that Reed, she was going to come tonight when she heard that, that status report, it's no longer a challenge. Any questions about that? So right now, that was one of the latest hurdles that we needed to clear before we can move forward with that. Okay? Then item C, update of facility plan options. Council is aware that J.H. Kelly sent the city an official letter indicating remorse about having had to make a very difficult decision of withdrawing their support. Take a break. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. We'll let you know what happened. We'll let him, let's contact him tomorrow morning regarding the remainder of the other forums, we won't proceed. As I was indicating, whether or not you're, as a matter of public record, we received an official letter from Mark Fleischauer, legal counsel with J.H. Kelly. And they had engaged in lengthy and heartfelt discussions with their leadership of the company and officials with Gibson Olson Engineering, and reached the unfortunate conclusion that at this point in time, they no longer felt that they could sponsor the MBR treatment system relating to the city of Vader's three lagoon as one of the alternatives for the city of Vader. They're going to discontinue their research efforts in that line of business. So that's official, and so they have withdrawn that as one of our alternatives. We have others, of course, and BHC has been notified of that, and so we expect a report from BHC any day now. Have they contacted you?
I, no, I haven't. I think it's going to be later in the month when we hear from them.
Okay.
There are other membrane, biomembrane reactors that are a similar type that they will still be considering.
Exactly.
Yeah. So it just won't be that specific one, so.
So the world is not collapsing around this. It's just, it didn't come as much of a surprise to me. And I know that some of the council members are well aware that their long-term management costs exceeded the actual plan itself, so no surprise. Anyway, with that, I would proceed with new business. And you will note that we finally had gotten, we've subdivided the old nuisance ordinance, abandoned houses, into three separate entities, and we've got two of the three ready for council action. So you have received in your package the nuisance vegetation draft ordinance and the junk vehicle draft ordinance. So, and we got these from Jennifer Robertson, adjunct city attorney working under Carol Morris. Carol has reviewed these and feels that they're defensible. So I would encourage council action.
So we're waiting for a motion, correct?
Yes.
I'll put a motion forward on, I moved to adopt ordinance 2014-12 relating overgrown vegetation on private property, declaring such vegetation a nuisance, providing a procedure for the city to abate such nuisance, describing a procedure for such abatement, including recovery of the cost for such abatement, and repealing ordinance numbers 2013-4 and 2013-6.
Okay, we'll do them one at a time. So you've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Flynn to approve ordinance 2014-12, nuisance vegetation, and we have a second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any council discussion, commentary?
There's a topic that was going to be brought up by Andy, and I'll bring it up also. I know there's been a lot of problems this year, we're getting things done, but there's, with this nuisance ordinance being passed, the city is also going to have to upkeep its properties to keep them from being overgrown. And I'm just saying that, and we have to make note of that.
Yes, we have to set a standard.
Right.
You don't have to be a rocket scientist to drive through the city streets and-
Right.
-observe what appears to me.
I had somebody pull me aside and were complaining about the intersection on V and 506. It's a blind, big blind spot right now.
I've lived in this community for almost eight years now, and this is as bad as I've seen it. And it's a reflection of the fact that our part-time public works employee is spending a portion of his day doing the waste treatment, testing. So the sooner we can get a replacement for that, the sooner he-
Well, then we have a, weren't we supposed to get somebody doing public service to help participate?
You recall at our last meeting?
Right.
And so he was accepted, and he agreed to come. We set a date for him on Tuesday of last week to meet with Nev, our employee. So at the allocated time, Nev was here-
He didn't show.
He didn't show. We learned later that his son had to be taken to the emergency room with pneumonia. So we rescheduled for the next day. And so Nev was here, and a no-show. We learned later that he was, got pneumonia himself, was sick. So then we rescheduled a third thing, and this is the third strike. I'll get into what happened then. So there was no problem after that, he was feeling fine. Nev shows up the third time, and he doesn't come, stiffs us again. So you're aware that the program sponsoring him is, requires him to engage in this community service to demonstrate his ability to, well, it's part of the-
It doesn't require him.
Doesn't require it, but it's one of the elements that they look for.
That's true.
Thank you for clarifying my word choice. And if he can't perform with that level of integrity, then we're to discontinue his association with the city. So that potential opportunity for the community evaporated. And I personally am not going to sit here and try it fourth time unless council members want me to try it. And I know that Pastor Durham mentioned there might be some community service hours for the church and such. I mean, we hold out some hope for that. I can inform the council that we're going to aggressively revisit the concept of getting some inmate labor. In years past, we've engaged in that many times. I personally, for several years, got involved with it. It's labor-intensive on the city employees' part, because you have to pick them up, you've got to oversee them, and you've got to deliver them back. And of course, we don't live next door to the facility, and other communities use their services regularly too, so it's kind of competitive. And I'm not going to sit here and say that that's our answer to it, because it's hard to sustain when you're 25 miles away in the city of Vader. But we'll try it. Nev, as you know his background, Department of California Corrections Officer, has no qualms about overseeing such individuals. So he's willing to try it. So we're going to try it. I think I mentioned that, if you aren't aware, I'll make the matter of public record, that I was approached again by the same group, the National Day of Service entities, the church groups, from the Shenala Centrally area, have indicated that they would be willing to come again to the city of Vader, but that won't happen until probably August, and then we'll have maybe 40 or 50 members of local churches and businesses. And we will ask, they've come or looked in the community to see what our needs might We, last year, you'll recall, we tried to fix the foundation of the jail, and it was too much for them. We may try again this year for that, because that foundation has another top. The jail is going to come falling down if we don't do something quickly. But I'm here to tell the council that unless you have something better, I'm going to encourage them to have volunteers come with weed eaters. And we will just weed eat every single street. But that's a one-time shot, it'd be dead by then. I want it, but the weeds will probably be dried up, so. But that's a long recitation of the concern that we've got for just what you said, Mr. Flynn. Believe me, I hear from members of the community, as you do, the concerns they've got about the appearance of our streets that you're gone, you're planted, and we'll take them. It's not long since. But there, this ordinance, we vote on it?
We haven't.
We have a second so far.
You have a second? I'm done talking. I think we need to move forward on this.
Okay.
So.
Disappointing clarification.
Yes.
Now, I understand the general nature of, you know, to remove things that obstruct or impair the free, full use of the sidewalk or the public, you know. On private property, how specific and detailed is that? Is that determined?
Yes, the enforcement responsibility would fall on the public works employee, staff, the mayor, city hall, and county sheriff's department. We'd have the citation process that will tick in. Of course, we've got the Vader Improvement Committee, which was the nuisance committee, but the staff is kind of disheartened. We have one member who's going to continue, another third one moved out of the city, so. And would you like to weigh in on that?
Well, just that, that's one of the ordinances that's going, that's up for repeal in there is the Improvement Committee, because the reason they were created was because of the old nuisance ordinance required a body, and this doesn't require a body. So then the Improvement Committee would be repealed. I guess that ordinance, that's part of what you see here on section three.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Well, I told them last week that they would be continuing. Hopefully that is applicable to the, how ordinance that's worked, Kevin.
I'm not sure.
Okay, well, so your question was the enforcement?
Well, the enforcement with on private property, where are they going to draw lines?
If you, if you see in section five where it says abatement by the city, so it sounds like the city employees, Phil, for instance, here at the office, would take the complaint. And then on section five, it comes to the council, says, "A resolution of the city council shall be adopted, which shall describe the property involved in the hazardous condition." So it won't be up to, it'll be up to the council to decide if it really is a nuisance.
So we have to go down there, take a look at it?
Right.
If we wanted, if we want to be informed.
You will receive a recommendation from whoever the code enforcement is, and I would assume that would include photographs as well, but, and then it would, the council would decide whether the city needed to take action. So if I understand this correctly, the homeowner would be notified that you need, please do something about this. We do have a code, and please, please do something about this. And so this next step, section five, happens if they refuse to do anything about it. And so if they, if they refuse to comply with the ordinance, then this, and the city feels that it needs to take action and do something about it, then that's when we would bring it to council and say, okay.
And thank you for mentioning, and this is a very good point to raise. I'll tell you, two days ago, I sat down with our city clerk, Jill, and this city is retooling itself, as you are well aware, and I'm the mayor of France. And my head spins when you ask questions like this. And you mentioned the code enforcement officer. We've got a part-time planner. We are constituting a planning commission. And we're trying to hire a public works person to deal with our testing. We're looking at hiring an engineer, part-time, in order to evaluate our city streets when the time comes to carry out the, you remember the excavation challenges with the streets? And we're beginning the process of hiring a code enforcement employee too, all under contract. So when you try and comprehend the, and then we were, of course, retooling all of the ordinances, which according to the city attorney, weren't worth the paper they were written on, were unenforceable. I hope that explains the confusion on my part, trying to keep the enforcement elements straight in this whole emerging new transformation of the city's ability to have ordinances that are enforceable in the first place and the personnel to enforce it in the second place. So we're about half-done in all of this process. Did I capture the essence of the-
The head spinning, yes.
We have to vote on this.
We, yes, you do have to vote on this. But the last thing I would say is that in a few days, we wanted, two days ago, to have a list for my awareness as to where we're at in all this process. And it might behoove us to share that with the council, so you're not as confused as we are on a day-to-day basis, and where we're at and where we're headed. So let's do that. When we get that list together, and we're going to create a folder for each of the topics, because I only touched on half of them. We'll have a folder for each of the topics, so if you come in and inquire as to what on earth is going on with this code enforcement process, you can pull out the folder and review it, and get yourself up to speed. And I intend to do likewise. Okay, so there you have it. Now, for the vote.
So, Mark, I had the same, the same issue as you. When I was reading through this, I was looking for specifics, you know, what constitutes a nuisance? Is it six inches of grass, or is it six feet of grass, you know? And it doesn't, and I think it would be hard to write a document that would, that would call out every single thing of what could possibly be a nuisance, so.
But I like, I like as less regulations as possible.
Yeah, and I think that's why it's written the way it is because then, you know, the complaint can come to the city, and then the city can come to the elected body, and then the elected body could determine whether or not it really was a nuisance. So I think that's why it's written the way it is.
It is definitely different. It's not as specific as the previous one. Okay, well, then with that, if there's no other council deliberation, let's put it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? One more item. Ordinance 2014-15, junk vehicle ordinance. Some of them are more complex. There was one issue that I particularly made note of. And I'm just curious to see what your comments are. If you have any concerns.
I was concerned that some of my vehicles that I drive might actually not qualify.
Well, if I understand this right, the person who has private property and not be living on it, choose to move a couple to three vehicles over there. But if he does, he still can't have them there if they're not, what we're talking about, I guess, restorable ones, unless he--
Register.
You just got to have the tabs on it.
No, that's not what this says.
Uh-oh, this is good for sure.
But anyway, you have to have it concealed properly or you can't even have it on the property unless you have the facilities to restore it. Is that correct?
Well, it's giving options that it can be in a facility. If it's in a facility, then it's not--
What's this here on page two? "The necessary facility must also be available for restoration to take place." And I don't know that--
But my sense is that if it's out of sight, if there are gave on question, it could be placed inside a facility or not visible or behind a fence that is sufficiently protected from public view.
Well, it says there, even if a cover, the cover must be in good condition. It must be replaced if it is torn, whether beaten or requires any other defects. And it's getting pretty detailed. I'm picky.
Well, we used to have-- and the ordinance before said that it had to be licensed and have a current tag on it. And I don't think anybody's going to pay for-- I liked that in our last ordinance because not many people are going to be sitting around with vehicles in their yard and then go through the process of tagging them and licensing them and have them ready for the street if they're just pieces of junk.
Well, you know, the thing about this meter concerns me is that we don't live in a community of a lot of high income. And more people are poor. I know when I was trying to get things, you know, tie-ins, that I have-- I'd like to have another car there to draw parts off or help cars draw parts off if I could put them someplace in order to fix my car or keep it going.
Well, there was provisions for that if it was not-- if it did not become an eyesore. And the whole intent of the ordinance was to not make the city a junkyard.
Well, yeah, I can understand.
And if you take a ride around through the city, there are people using it like a junkyard. This car is sitting everywhere, and they're not in business, and they're not using it for parts. They're just--
Sitting there.
It must-- they use it for decoration, I think. I don't know.
I can understand the intent. The intent would be, I mean, it's good. In fact, I think it doesn't say Washington has a wall that if you start piling up vehicles, it becomes like a wrecking yard. You have to have a six-foot fence. But what I'm concerned about is the people that have-- well, I have five children. And they get-- you can have five children, and they're getting teenagers, and two, three of them have a car, and they buy another car and fix on that car. Boy, you got a problem right away.
But you can always scrap those vehicles and get money out of it. So I don't know there's much excuse for even if-- You have a legitimate reason to get parts out of it.
I've tried to scrap vehicles before, and it's not that easy. And sometimes they won't take them.
Well, if you look at the definition, it says junk vehicle has to meet at least three of the criteria. And so it has to be an older car. It has to have excessive damage.
Three years old. That's not very old.
Three years old or older.
But to me, that's a new car.
I know. For me, it is. But broken window or windshield, flat tires, missing tires, motor, transmission, rusted interior, leaking oil or gasoline is apparently-- I mean, it has to meet at least three of those criteria. And if it doesn't, then it's not a junk car, and you don't have to worry about it.
Well, most of these cars, oh, will meet A, C, and D. I mean, most of them, three years old, are apparently inoperable, has approximate fair market value.
So then what you have to do if you want to have a vehicle around like that is you need to keep it out of sight. Put it in your backyard behind your fence. Put it, if you have a garage, put it in your garage or cover it so that it's not an eyesore. I mean, I think-- I mean, that's the way I understand what this is saying.
It's only being fair to your neighbors. If we don't do something, then everybody's going to have vehicles everywhere. And that's-- you can go around town right now, and I can show you a car after car just sitting there. And we've got to have something like this into effect.
We have a situation in our city now that's-- I mean, I haven't noticed that much, but--
Since I've been mayor, we went through two separate campaigns. One, I think, the record of something like 26 cars that were removed. But we had the challenge of the registration, and so somebody would just register it. And so then we're stymied, you know. So I'm glad, actually, it's not in it. But it's worse now than it was when we first began this campaign about seven years ago. So I think it's necessary. And this is a better-- I think it's a fairer version of it. My concern was who would be the representative, who would be the Vader law enforcement or the enforcer of the ordinance, stipulate the city clerk. I'm uncomfortable with that, and I thought you would be too.
It's nice that, I mean, similarly, the vegetation ordinance, it comes to the council, and then it's on the council's head.
Yeah, I was saying, when you have the code enforcement official or even-- I've been the mayor before, but the former city clerk. But yeah, like yours, you're suggesting.
We're small enough that we could deal with a case-by-case basis.
You're not going to be inundated.
For the record, my property is not in this situation in the game. But I noticed that the city clerk has highlighted all the way through it.
Yes. We discussed that. You recall three years ago.
No, we didn't quite know what to do. We were going to check on law enforcement. But my understanding was, as long as we're hiring the county, we can't really expect them to be our decision-making. They can help us enforce.
Yeah, but not the-- those who identify the target.
Why can't we have, like before, the previous ordinance? Just becomes before the council with whatever complaint evidence there is, a decision is made whether in violation or not, and before they're sent a citation, it's investigated, and then--
Well, that isn't the way it was before. The way it was before, well, previous to--
I'm talking about now.
Right, but when we had our own police officer, he was the code enforcement officer.
Right, but we haven't had one of those in three years now.
Right, and so I guess I thought that's what he meant.
No, no, I'm talking about the ordinance. It's-- it says it comes before the council and let the council decide. If there is a problem, if there is, then we deal with the enforcement.
Yeah, and then we turn it over to the sheriff's department to carry out the determination.
Personally, I'd like to table it to other council members and discuss it further.
Okay, well, you know, that's not a bad idea because we're still waiting for the abandoned house element of it, and maybe we should let this one in with that.
Well, it sounds good.
Not to join them, but, okay.
Do we have to retract the motion then?
Yes, that--
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
We didn't put a motion. We just started discussing without a motion.
Sorry, you're right.
That's okay. Now, we did have a couple of comments from members. Okay, one's withdrawn.
I'd like to make a comment on that. I had the opportunity to speak with Bill Tietzel today. He's up there in Lewis County, and he's the compliance and environmental officer. And he said that if you would personally contact the county commissioners, they will help you work out all of this and probably little or no cost. And I have the information here, and I'll leave it with you and Jill because wouldn't that let them worry? Even if you had to pay them 50 bucks a pot, it would really make a difference.
Bill Tietzel has worked with the city a number of times on our previous campaigns. And so his good services are much appreciated.
I have his phone number and the information.
Well, gladly, perhaps right after the meeting.
Thank you.
Then with that, I think the official action on the council relating to that subject is to table it for our next meeting.
Yep.
So with that, I think we've concluded our agenda, so without further comments from the council.